Which was perfect because most of the stuff I was able to get away in the refrigerator, a couple of things are sitting on my counter, but it'll be fine. Got two huge jarred chokes. But yeah, most of it got put away, which I'm glad of. You know, I have soup that I can heat up and I have vegetable sautee I did last night. Either one of them can be ready in about five minutes and that'll be perfect when I get home, you know.
Yeah, I get the little pot pies for my five minute.
Oh, well, there you go.
It's just a two hour hold. Let it work.
Hey, yeah. There will be. So Mayor Jones, I was at Sabora Avita the other day in Vista and mentioned that I believe San Marcos and they ought to come to us. She said, oh, yeah, I know the mayor. She's always trying to come there. And I get that morning, she actually got a call about the official opening. Where did she say?
If...
Oh, God, now we can't remember.
Madam Mayor, I can make a closed session report?
Mrs. Peak, could you please bring us back from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The council has reconvened from closed session during which it discussed without Councilmember LeBlanc in participating, potential litigation on the Mayard live lease relating to 288 Rancho San Marcos, California. The council discussed the matter with staff and provided direction and no reportable action was taken. Thank you. That concludes the closed session report.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Peak. With that, the special meeting is adjourned. And we will start our next meeting momentarily.
Update.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just gotta make it.
Dave?
Yeah, Dave, can you get it?
It's very good.
If you don't want to, if you want to, we should go ahead and do it. We should go ahead and do it. Please, we will. This is the city.
All right, I would like to call this meeting to order for February 11th, 2025. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for God, we ask your blessings on those who have been called to lead this community in which we live, work, and play. Guide us to peacefully go through debate. Remind us that not only are our leaders servants and that is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right, good, and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, the spirit of justice, and the spirit of love. Amen. Okay, could we please have the roll call, Mr. Skalik?
Yeah. Councilmember LeBlanc?
Present.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Sanelle?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, and no presentations this evening, everyone. So you get to stay put. Moving on to the consent calendar, are there any items, any councilmembers wish to pull?
Move to approve tonight's consent calendar.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any no's? Okay, seeing none. We have two oral communications. First up will be John Mosher, followed by Bryant Rumbaw.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff. Hello again. Speaking, John Mosher, speaking as the president of San Marcos Mobile Estates HOA. This is the time of the year that we receive our rent review notice, and right now, we're currently in the process of gathering our signatures for the petition to challenge it, get it stopped, and then get the owners to sit down and negotiate with us. My thing this year is pretty simple, 75% of CPI, and then get them to actually go through and give us a comprehensive list of the repairs that need to be done in the park and timelines to do it. I've talked before, the same thing, give me a two, three-year timeline to work with the residents. Right now, we have critical infrastructure problems and with electricity and then also the water system they're also looking at replacing. So it's how to fit this stuff in and make our parks safe while we're also getting these things done. Speaking for SEMRA, our citywide mobile home resident association, recently I was at a few more parks, El Dorado and Rancho San Marcos, and I was hearing the same things there as problems with maintenance. And specifically, the issue I'm bringing up is the driveways. We all seem to have the problem where they won't maintain the driveways, and yet that's one of the critical pieces that is part of the owner's responsibility. Mobile home parks are very simple, a layout. So I've actually been, started to refer some of the other parks to the San Diego Legal Aid Society on some of these issues, as well as working with our city staff and Helen's office on items that they can help us with. So all that stuff is in the works. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up is Bryant Rumbaw.
How are you guys? Good to see you. Good to see you. Thank you. You know, it's funny, I was actually gonna go speak at Temecula Valley. The city of Temecula, you know, it's Temecula Valley when I grew up there, whatever, in Fallbrot. And ironically, I ended up coming here tonight because, you know, the way I live my life is, you know, when God does something for me, I kind of just roll with it. But I happened to actually meet one of your mother, apparently father-in-law, and I found out that one of you worked at a video game, video store when you were in high school. But it was good, you know, I'm a working man. Hey, I'm here to have fun. The reason, I don't even live in your city, guys. You know, my reason for existence right now is to continually try and try to unify my country, to have America set an example. And I'm fully aware, like I've told you guys before, you know, we all exist in a system. And, you know, everything from what's going on with these, you know, rallies about the deportation problem, you know, the immigrant, the ICE issue. Our country is being divided more so than ever, and we really need to have a rallying cry about something. And we've all grown up in this system, and what needs to happen still is we need to get, you know, the people to essentially demonstrate what self-governance should be about. I mean, when that gentleman was talking about the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, I mean, that's pretty rough at this point in the game. You know, we've got, your average middle-class individual is no longer, you know, borderline extinct, gone the way of the dinosaur, okay? And we need to have a society that, you know, gets back to that. And what it's gonna take is it's gonna take us kind of re-examining how we got here and these fruits of this system. And I do believe, at the bottom of my soul, that if we engineer an engaged citizenry, take the money out of the political campaigns, I mean, you guys are doing a, you know, pretty much compensation package booster. I was just reading on it. You know, what I will tell you guys is I had a friend of mine tell me, a lot of the city council people in other cities within San Diego County, they actually, quote-unquote, are compensated a ton more than the city of San Marcos. And it was kind of shocking when I saw that. You know, not to say I'm a small government guy. I believe that 100% the more that the citizenry deals with, the less they remind or have to rely on government. And, you know, it's a matter of being responsible. But we can change our ways. We live in a highly connected society, taking the money out of the political campaigns. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is New Business, which is our Resolution 2025-9407, approving an updated full-time class comp and class and comp study. Do we have a presentation? There you are. Okay, Janelle.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Janelle Loughlin, Administrative Services Director, and tonight I'm presenting proposed updates to the city's full-time classification and compensation schedule, reflecting upcoming organizational changes. Executive compensation adjustments require public discussion, and that will be the focus of this presentation. Two title changes are being proposed to better reflect strategic priorities and responsibilities. The Economic Development and Public Affairs Director and Legislative Affairs Director/City Clerk titles are being added to Grade Three of the schedule. The Housing and Neighborhood Services Director title is being reinstated at Grade Three, where it was previously classified when this was an active position. The salary range for Grade Three is $144,057 to $195,700 per year. A new classification title, Fire Chief, Director of Public Safety, is being added under Grade Six F to reflect the expanded citywide leadership role of the fire chief. The salary range for Grade Six F is $189,094 to $251,774 per year. In conclusion, these updates align job titles with their evolving functions, demonstrating their roles and responsibilities within the organization, while also ensuring that compensation is appropriately classified. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any no votes? Seeing none. Okay, moving on, do we have any more oral communications? Oh, we have, we have one, I think. That would be Flower Alvarez. Welcome.
I don't even need it. See, look how good I'm getting. I wasn't even done filling it out. Let me know when, ready?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Hello, Mayor and councilmembers again. For the record, my name is Flower Alvarez Lopez, and I'm here on behalf of Universidad Popular to provide our on-the-record updates. And our organization supports San Marcos residents on a daily basis. I'm really glad you all had the opportunity to meet our colleague Grace at the last council meeting. We are really honored to have Grace join our team. We love having young people and college students involved in our work. On that note, I would also like to highlight one of our very own that was nominated for the Youth of the Year at the Boys and Girls Club. My son, JJ Sanchez, was one of the competitors for the Youth of the Year this year, and a lot of you had the chance to meet him. So we're really excited and we were happy to highlight him and the work that he has done. JJ has really been part of the organization since he was about three years old. He has grown up giving back to the community and doing community service his entire life. Another thing I would like to highlight is that our organization has actually not organized or been part of the organizing efforts of some local demonstrations that have had happen here in San Marcos, but we've had to respond to the need for community security. So the two that we're aware of, that we know of, a demonstration that happened on February 3rd, and then another one that happened yesterday by Mission Hills High School students. So our team actually went out to do documentation, human rights observation, and also community security for those two demonstrations. We wanted to make sure, especially yesterday, that young people were kept safe in our city. So even though we had nothing to do with organizing it or even having really a heads-up about it, we did respond to that community need. Transitioning to Cesar Chavez Day, which is around the corner, April 11th. I just heard from Cal State San Marcos, who is our biggest partner on Cesar Chavez Day of Service, that everything is moving forward for April 11th, and we hope to see some of you all out there with us. We continue to do community education and civic engagement work in San Marcos. We have our citizenship class. We also already have the save the date for our celebration this year, which will be November 14th. We hopefully will see some of you all, especially the mayor. I know you had a chance to be with us last year for that event. We continue to provide food at our community pantry and also thank the city for their ongoing contributions for that initiative, and that gets used every single day in San Marcos. So we really appreciate that support. And those are my on-the-record updates today. Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much, Flower. And your son is amazing. He really is. Really, you should be very proud of him. He's a wonderful human being. Anyway, okay, moving on to reports. So Sandeg, we had, we had a discussion about the audit, the, I'm sorry, not the audit, but the federal investigation. What came most of that discussion is that we want to move forward with all the recommendations. And one of those recommendations is that the attorney report directly to the Board of Directors and not necessarily to the executive director, because the attorney, much like Mrs. Peak, should respond to our needs and our wants rather than the executive director, because there might be a conflict at times with those two discussions. The other thing that we had was an update on the 67, and that is a highway here, interstate actually, in San Diego County that's from Ramona down to, it actually goes further than Ramona, but goes from Ramona down to El Cajon by way of the lakeside area. And so we were talking about the fire hazards and the evacuation risks with that particular interstate. And so we had discussed all of the things that we were thinking as a board, like we need to get people out safely, and that we wanted to move forward with that. So that was just a discussion item, but that was those of the comments that were made. That was pretty much it. We do have another meeting coming up this week, and so stay tuned for our next meeting, what happens at that. And then we have League of California Cities. That would be Councilmember Musgrove.
Let me pull up my notes, Mayor. Give me one second.
And Councilmember LeBlanc, you just went to a league, maybe you want to, I don't know. I thought you were looking for notes. I was trying to kill a little bit of time for you.
She actually, it was a Zoom meeting this cycle, so she was in attendance also, as was our regional president. So I guess the most significant information we got was from Jason Ryan, who gives us the legislative update. Right now, he said that the state HHS, their budget largely comes from the federal government, and it results in a total of 34% of the state budget. And these funds are now in play because of the ongoing conflict between the state of California and Washington. It's still unclear on where we are with our current budget. The gross numbers are in, but they're still waiting to see exactly where we stand. So the governor's office has put out, I think it was about $138 million in the black, but they're not quite sure if that's accurate or not. So they're waiting to see the particulars, and these are all estimates at best. The League will be watching carefully for efforts by the state to clawback funds dedicated to cities and counties in an effort to correct any budget shortfalls. The legislature has started the process of bill submissions, and a detailed report will be offered at next month's meeting. Senator Scott Weiner shared with Jason, he wants to allow transit agencies to develop adjacent properties exclusive of local zoning. For the proceeds, we'll remain with the transit agencies, but there'll be more to follow on that one.
More mandates. Kind of love that. I'm being facetious, of course. Any further discussion, councilmembers?
I just wanted to mention that I also went to the League of California Cities Newly-Elected Mayoral and City Councilmember Conference two weeks ago. That was a three-day conference where we had a lot of really interesting sessions. We did a lot of great networking. I got to meet people from all over the city, a lot of city council, or all over the state, a lot of really great councilmembers, and we had some really great sessions. A couple of my favorites were social media, and there were, there was a really interesting ethics one. Just a really great few days with some really incredible people. So it was really nice of the League to sponsor something like that for newly-elected.
President Nunez?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to add to Councilmember Musgrove's report that the current deadline for bills to be admitted is February 21st, so it is coming up. And I think once we know about what bills have been introduced, then the League will have an updated report for all of us.
Okay, just a quick question for all three of you. Are you hearing anything about our neighborhood voices that we voted on a couple of years ago to support, and that is the bringing local land, or bringing land use back to localities? Have we heard anything about that?
That is still a focus, but nothing from Sacramento, if that was your question.
All right. I think, yeah, I think that's going out for signature gathering, but maybe find out where the League is. I would assume they would support that bill, or not, it's not a bill, it actually will be a ballot measure, but I would assume that there would be support from the League of California Cities, being that's always one of their focus areas.
It was, as of the last, last year. We're in a new cycle this year, and it wasn't mentioned at this past month's meeting, and the January meeting was mostly introductory for new members because of the election cycle. So maybe we'll get updates in March.
I think so. I think we will. I haven't personally seen anything that's been highlighted about it, but I know, I know it's something that will probably get addressed.
Well, I'm, I'm starting to talk to people about it because we have, you know, land use decisions where people go, wait a minute, why aren't you making that decision? And I'm like, well, it's because of Sacramento, so we need to start, try to get that back. So anyway, all right. Well, if you hear anything, please, please, please let us know. Okay, North County Transit District.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Our regular board meeting is gonna be next week on the 20th. In addition to that, as I kind of continue to kind of get on-boarded, I'm meeting with, one-on-one with the chairwoman, Bat Patel, on the 24th, and then I'm gonna be meeting with senior leadership with staff on the 28th.
And are you gonna talk more about the NCTD+?
I will always, every meeting, talk about NCTD+.
Okay, great. Just glad it only, it only took since 2000, I don't know, 16, I think I started talking about that. Okay, and North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority?
And we meet in two weeks.
Okay. And that'll be your first meeting, right?
Yes, it will. I'm excited.
Okay. I think you go with the chief, maybe. He might drive you. I'm not sure where it is anymore, but definitely make sure you check in on that. Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Nunez?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm still also transitioning into the role. I, we have our new director orientation next week, so I'm looking forward to that. There's a lot of acronyms to learn. But we did meet January the 30th, and just a couple of highlights. Councilmember Katie Melendez from Vista is gonna be serving as our chair, and Councilmember Christian Garcia from Escondido is serving as our vice chair. And we also did get to appoint our, our resident citizens advisory members, and so we, we did get to appoint Kevin Norris, who's been serving in that capacity, so we appointed for another two years. And I know he's been very involved in that role, also serving as part of our Climate Action Plan work.
Implementation.
Implementation, thank you. And obviously as a planning commissioner, so he's gonna continue in that role. The agency is, is working on implementing a strategic plan. It's something that has been in the works. There is a draft plan that's on their website, and it's still up. It hasn't been adopted. It hasn't been approved. So if our residents, if anybody's interested in looking at that and commenting on that, if there's any kind of, if there's kind of, any kind of feedback, they can always obviously reach out to me or contact the Clean Energy Alliance. But that is something that I think is very important, considering where it's at and where we, where we need to be. So I would encourage everybody to, to look at that.
I recently read that the San Diego Energy Alliance, or I'm not sure their actual name, but the one that San Diego is in, which is a different one than ours, had just recently, I thought I read, lowered their rates amid uncertainty, or something along those lines.
The average is about 2.3%, some higher, some lower, but their threshold for their base energy mirrors the state's at about 48%. Ours is at 50 or 75%. So it's an apple and an orange to compare.
Yeah, I was just, well, I was curious why they would do it amid uncertainty, thinking that, that didn't really sound like that was, I don't know. I was just kind of questioning that. So any insight, I don't, I don't know, maybe it doesn't matter, but maybe offline. I just, I don't think you should be lowering rates if it's uncertain that there could be a budget out, you know, like difference, and there's like a delta, and it doesn't work. So I don't know, just my thoughts. Not really sure.
I'll certainly inquire about that and see what the, yeah, what the difference is.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that. Okay, City Council Business Visits. Councilmember Musgrove and I went on that yesterday. That was, I'm looking for my notes here. Do you want to start out? It was Union Baseball Systems. They are actually, there we are. They are actually right here in San Marcos, in the old batting cages that are right on Rancheros, next to what used to be the brewery, and I'm trying to think of the name of it.
Wild Barrel.
Wild Barrel, yes.
At San Taro, by the DMV.
Yeah, right, right around the corner, yes. Across from the DMV, but around the corner from our sheriff department, and then, well, also the fire training facility. But anyway, it was an interesting discussion that we had with them. They were founded in 2021 by former University of Richmond teammate, teammates, Matt McLaughlin, Andy Givens, and Bobby Basham, who reunited in San Diego to establish a progressive pro-style baseball training facility. It was very cold in there, by the way.
It was great.
But it was really nice. The general manager, director of player development is Marcus Hatley. He graduated from Mission Hills High School and was drafted by the Chicago Cubs in 2006. He is the one, oh, that's behind me, kind of, he's very tall. They're all very tall. But he was very tall. They have some really cool state-of-the-art, like machines that help with loosening up your arms and all these things. But you could actually add some things to this, Councilmember?
Sure. So the gentleman on the far left is Marcus Hatley. He was drafted by the Cubs, played with them for several years, then went to, across the river to the St. Louis Cardinals. And as he put it, you know, your career, you start in the minors, you go to the majors, and they kick you back to the minors. You know, he, he had to do a little soul-searching of what he wanted to do, and he was already hitting 30 and realizing the 20-somethings were outpacing him. So he moved on, and...
Actually, I think their names, yeah, I was thinking that was Marcus, but that's not Marcus. The one that's behind me, what was his name?
That's Marcus behind you.
That is Mar, okay.
Yeah, Bobby Basham, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Bobby Basham is on the left.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
So Bobby on the left played for Seattle Mariners.
Okay.
So they're both, you know, ingrained and grew up in the baseball environment. And Bobby played at Palomar, I believe it was. He played for a short time at Palomar College.
It was Bobby, yeah. Yeah, Bobby did, yeah.
And he, on the far left, Bobby, he is still, does front office work for the Chicago Cubs. So his wife is back in Chicago. He comes out here and helps with the program. So he's moving back and forth quite a bit. And as the mayor was saying, they have a machine, it's gonna be on one of the other slides, you get to see the mayor in action. It's a Proteus machine. There it is. And so you can program this for resistance, so it develops shoulder strength, arm strength, motion, and it's completely flexible. It'll rotate any number of angles, so you can go laterally, horizontally, push in and out, move it up and down, depending on what you need to work on, and you can program that for the resistance level. It's pretty neat.
They didn't have the action shot of me and my foreign shields doing that, but it was, it was pretty easy at first, and then they gave, they put some resistance on, and I went, oh, wow. It was very different. I had to then really brace myself because you had to use your, your whole core to actually move it as it got more difficult. Anyway, it was, it was pretty interesting. They have some really cool technology. And then the one where it measures how fast you're throwing it, they actually had said that they had, was it a 15-year-old that can throw the ball 90, is it 94 miles an hour? It was like unbelievable.
There's a sophomore, and I'm trying to remember the high school. It's in San Diego, maybe Scripps Ranch area. He's throwing in the low 90s.
The low what?
Low 90s.
Yeah, yeah, the low 90s, yeah.
A 15-year-old.
Fifteen, yeah.
Sliding the ball. And you can see Marcus is up there on that little artificial mound that they designed, and it's at a regulation length, and it goes down to a grid that they put together, and it has nine little pockets, so you put together, and it has nine little pockets, so you can see where your ball's going, and there's a track, they call it a TrackMan device.
Yeah.
It, it shoots a radar, it, and it processes speed, angle, angle of deflection, rotation, rotations per minute, and how the ball is moving, and it, from where you're, where he's standing in that upper-left photo, you can see in the corner, it looks like there's a monitor on the wall, it'll, as soon as that ball hits the back end, it all, it comes up there, and it's unique to the individual, so it's not shared unless they wanna share it. But the Proteus machine that the mayor's on, on the right-hand side, you log into that, you use it, and that goes against, um, any number of people around the country that use those machines, so you can compare yourself, how am I compared to other people? My height, my age, my weight, uh, developmental, uh, abilities, um, it's, this, when you, when you go inside there, it's interesting, because it's a large room, you can see the marks on the wall where that was the axe-throwing wall from that business. It doesn't look overly impressive until you start talking to them and realizing what they do, and they have kids, uh, their, their focus is really on the high school and the early college, but, uh, there's no shortage of work for them.
Oh, there it is, uh, where he was throwing it, on the top left.
So it's, um, it's, it's really unique, they're, uh, they're doing outreach right now to a lot of the different schools. We talked to them about getting with the AD at, uh, Cal State, they have a baseball team there, to, uh, encourage them to come out, that they have to, you know, book their time, because the kids will come in after school, that's, that's their prime time, is when school gets out up until early evening, um, and they deal with a lot of top-quality teens who wanna get into the baseball world.
Yeah, and they originally started in Kearney Mesa, then they opened their San Marcos facility in October of '24, and, um, because they needed to, uh, accommodate their growing, uh, membership, that started with 40 to 50 members in the first month alone, and their, um, customer service focus is committed to fostering a love of baseball within the community. Um, they have lessons, again, like you had said, for all ages and skills, even people my age could learn, uh, with a particular emphasis on elite middle and high school players, definitely not me. Um, members receive personalized, uh, information regarding their skills, um, and then also when they have a standout, they have a lot of relationships with the, um, with the scouts, and so they will come and, and take a look at them. Anyway, uh, they're committed to a well-balanced, thoughtful approach, uh, to player development, ensuring the best outcomes. Through honesty, growth, and long-term success, they prioritize integrity, transparency, and mentorship by treating the players with respect, fostering sustainable development over short-term gains and surrounding athletes. And, you know, they said that one of the things that they focus on a lot, too, is just making sure there are no injuries, and that's one of the things that that one, um, uh, the thing where I was holding on to it with my hand, that actually helps a lot, so that you can, uh, build that core, um, strength, so you don't have, uh, or so you have less, um, injuries. Anything else you wanna add?
That's it, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Okay, with that, uh, that is our last, or, oh, any council commentary?
I just want, and I should've pointed this out earlier, tomorrow afternoon at 2:00 is the Cal City's webinar on behested payments. If any of the council members would like the, the Zoom login, I can send it to you.
Okay.
Or I'll send it to all of you and to the city manager, and that way it can be dispersed.
Perfect, okay. Uh, with that, this meeting is adjourned.